First issues can join over zoom.
Okay.
I have so many down there, but most I can actually ask.
Okay.
Might be that a lot of things. Oh, that's true.
In this one, she have a.
Yeah, still need to first somebody out here.
Okay. Um. On the summer. Yeah, it'd be great.
All right.
Oh, no, you don't. Don't apologize. It's not on you. Well. It's all volunteer. I understand.
That was just like your dog.
I'm sorry.
Is that your dog?
Yes, I have a bit more back to actually.
Two. My stepson had one. It's a sweet dog.
Yeah. I have a boy and then I have a fourteen year old puppy.
Uh huh.
And two jurors with red letters.
We have a pot hound.
Oh.
It's a bear dog. Bread should have chased bear in North Carolina.
We have an eight oh four on the line. Is would that happen?
That's me, Claire.
Okay. So Claire, since we have adopted remote voting, if you could state your reason for being absent and remote? And also state your location and full name. You should be able to carry out any motions needed.
Okay.
Um, and that will allow us to have a core. Um, I'll go into the detail, but you're only allowed to during the year. So. Um, you can use one now and then call for the next time.
Okay, um, Claire McMahon, um, reason for not being in person is I'm out of town. And currently in Turks and Caicos Island.
Thank you, Claire. Um, Josh, you know, a warm.
Excellent. Uh, the time is seven oh three. I'll officially open the ARB's. Uh, monthly meeting. Uh, can I have a roll call?
Brad Barker.
Here.
I'm Scott. Claire McMahon.
Present.
Josh Pavy.
Present.
And John Redd.
All right, with two voting members, we do have a quorum. Uh, I'd like to turn your attention to the agenda. Uh, do I have a, uh, take a moment if you'd like to review and then I'll get a motion to approve. All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Or or deny or change, whatever you'd like to motion.
Oh. Oh, uh, uh, no, I I don't have a motion.
Um. Okay, uh, so then you would motion to approve.
I do.
Okay. No. Uh, then, uh. Claire, do you second?
I second that motion to approve.
Okay, uh, guess I'll just do a all in favor.
Oh.
I.
Okay, no. All right. So then we're going to move on to number two, approval of past minutes of the ARB meeting. February one, twenty twenty four. Um, double typed, uh, okay. Um, if you had a chance to already read them, uh, I'll get another motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
Check it.
All in favor?
Oh.
I.
All right, moving on, uh, we will postpone our matters from the public. Uh, we'll go ahead and jump into our new business, uh, since we don't have. Uh, does everyone here have items on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we'll move on to four A, the COA for four fifteen Harrison Street. Uh, you you're welcome to sit there if you'd like, or you're welcome to join us at the table.
Um, good.
Okay, all right, uh, so. Get turned over here. Um. And let's see, I believe. This was in regards to the paint, right? We just painted house and just need to get it going. Okay. Um.
Mister Lane, would you like to say a little bit about what?
No, actually, it it didn't start out at all about it. It started out about some rock that that we had noticed and it turned into a full house. True version, but we had some siding that was going bad.
Right.
Um, and. It just nothing went to another and we ended up. Uh, having the entire house canvas free. Um, and then repainted. Uh, we kept as much of the original periods as we could. Um, and then made a color adjustment. It used to be the yellow house. See how they now refer to as whole yellow.
The coal yellow. Okay. Um. Claire, uh, are you screen sharing?
Um.
Just so she, just so she has a.
Are you on the phone?
Yeah, I have. I have the email pulled up. I have I have all the material.
Awesome. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were able to see it. Uh. Okay. Um. Okay. Um, so, uh. My. My opinion of the matter would be it's not a outlandish color that, you know, would fall into inappropriate. Um, that's rather neutral. Um, how do our voting members feel?
I think it's.
I agree.
I agree. I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
To the period and. To the town now.
Okay. Um, I think it looks good.
Okay, um, so with that being said, as long as we've reviewed the COA, uh, could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, uh, and then do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, now this one's going to be a little different since it's not just a line item. I'll have, we'll do roll call if that's, uh, if we can. Thank you.
Mister Barker?
Uh, I approve. Is that what you want from me?
Yeah.
I I approve.
Here.
Yeah. It.
And Claire?
I approve.
Good.
Pushing passes.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Um, okay, uh, well, sorry for making you come out tonight, but we really appreciate you coming out. Yeah.
Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. Um, okay. Uh, so moving on along to, oh, and let me find my agenda. Sorry, guys. There we go. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to four B. So tiger fuel. Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, boy.
All right, my friends. So. With this, this is going to be in regards to a few of the signs that we currently have, um, and then a couple new things. I think it's actually only two new signs, right, for the proposed banisters?
Yeah, we're kind of, this has been a more of a sequencing issue on our part, uh, with multiple sign vendors. So.
Okay.
This should capture everything and keep us under our, um. Ceiling as far as like totals where it's like it goes for the site.
Um, awesome. Yeah, and, uh, I, you know, the last time we talked, we were close to that. Number, but that was without including the entire other side that you have. So, I mean, you you should be. Uh, green clear for that limitation. So we should be good to go. Um.
Yeah, so I provided a factory report where. Well, I thought if you want to be able to have a page of that, so, um, I worked with the two vendors. I wanted to do them there.
I've I've read it. Some good shit.
Um. And what they did is they took their maximum, uh, allows square footage signage based off of frontage and then provided a convenient, uh. Summary of all the signs on site and also totally out. So the shortest way is that Saff finds that's in compliance with our sign orders.
Okay.
Um, to get into the floor of the details. Um, we have we had a piece signage up here who stay provided with, uh. With dimensions, uh, lighting details that we requested before.
Okay.
Um. They included this previously approved, uh, monument signs.
Yep.
Which I definitely no change this too. Um, but you, as you said, the sequencing, uh, original nature, have they had on?
It's still false. Exactly.
And then they provided rotations on both the main building and tiger wash.
Yep.
Uh, those signs, those are relevant to the last time, uh, your staff was here.
Yep.
Um. Including, uh, in your packets and I provided Brad with a larger copy of it for you if you want to look at details.
Sure.
Uh, and then a reduction in the, well, first a reduction in the signage for the main building. And for the tire wash.
Okay.
Was done to fit into plan for the addition of the canopy.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
So right here, this is the the best page where they, um. Summarize the full square footage for the signage on the site.
Okay.
Um, provide the proposed, which is also an application, and then also provide the allowable, uh, signage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I just want to write that also and describe a little bit about it in Saff apart on four B. But it's just kind of reentering the permission notes provided by the contractors.
Okay, awesome. Um, I think the only. Well, this, well, that doesn't actually apply to that. Um, well, kind of does. The lighting for signs, um, are we having it angled down to kind of?
On the, um, the the monument signs or on the?
Uh. Kind of on both of them, um, but I think the new one that we, you know, haven't talked about at all would be.
Yes, that's referred to as an eyebrow and it is purely a downward lit. Onto just the lettering on it and you'll see it on other canopies around. And it's it is a downward focus. It's almost it's tucked up under kind of like an eyebrow. So. Looking at it, you don't even see the light. You just see the glow.
So you have a, there was softer on the top.
Yeah, it's tucked up under its own kind of ridge. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
I know we're dealing with signs, but the building, uh, will have, uh, brick veneer.
Yes, so those two monument signs, it's a steel pole behind the brick.
Uh huh.
And then, uh, those are the ones kind of at the intersection of James River Road and Route twenty. Once the poles go in, then we'll veneer the faces, um, in brick. Actually, they were setting a one, uh, north of town at the sicko station. Today, they were setting a steel pole with the sign. It looks like that one's going to get veneered too, but that that dresses it up and makes it look a lot nicer than just having a steel pole.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, for me, the biggest part is you're within that. Limit and the signs look silly, you know, size wise, so.
And we basically pulled everything off the building except for one in that weave above the front door that was. Because we've got the branding on the market, uh, on the canopies and on the pumps, there's little signs on the pumps and the canopy. There were three more logos on the building itself that we just we pulled off. We left two on the car wash. Um, but the building had more, but, um. Because again, it's branded on the canopy on the M I D, um, this made the most sense and got us in compliance. So.
Awesome. Uh.
Yeah, I think it looks, it looks good.
Do we have, uh, do we have any questions, comments, concerns?
I like it. I think I like it.
Thank you. Okay. Claire, do you have any?
Yeah. No, I think I like how you changed it to like less on the building and then you have the canopy and the tiger wash is a little bit smaller, but. You're able to keep both. So I think I think it looks, it works well.
Okay, thank you. We do too.
Um, with this being a COA, I'll ask for another roll call. Oh, uh, actually first, sorry, procedure.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Right. Uh. Do I have a second?
Check it.
Okay, and then can I get a roll call?
Parker?
Oh. I I approve, uh.
Allison Bassens. Claire?
Um, I approve.
Okay.
Pushing passes.
Pushing passes. Thank you. Um. Thank you for coming down. Sorry for, you know.
No, sorry. Took us a couple times. What's the old saying? The third time's a charm. So.
I.
We'll get to it. Well, thank you guys for everything. We're really excited.
In in government work at, you know, third time's a charm is you're doing pretty good. So, yeah.
Well, here here in a month, we hope to see you all up there. So we're excited.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you very much. You have a good evening. Thank you. All right, so we are now going to go ahead and move down to our four C, which is going to be six thirty five tenacity tattoo. Would you like to come up for? All right. Yeah.
Oh, you're good.
All right, and so this is going to be for the sun. We've got you here. All right, um. And are you able to pull, uh, the graphic up for us? I know we had it in our email, but. Yes, awesome.
You have a sign on the door already, don't you?
So this will be for, uh. The COA for, uh, that'll be a new sign, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then including the sign on the door as well with it. Um. All right, well, first off, welcome. Uh, we're excited to have you. Um. Uh, so right now, open the floor to members. If you have questions, comments?
I do, I cannot. Well, is there a sheet with, uh, dimensions of that song?
Yeah, so I've provided the application.
There you go.
Um, and then I need to maybe verbally share that with Claire. Cause she isn't in person.
Oh, I see. Forty six by twenty four, is that it?
Yeah, and then, uh, the one below it, twenty five, uh, twenty four by twelve.
And twenty four by twelve. Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's not very large. It's, it's okay. Just curious, where is the ice cream?
There's no ice cream anymore.
That moved, right?
Yeah.
It's gone. Now there's a massage.
Mm hmm. Yeah, it's a balance, I believe.
That's where the slave, uh, house.
It was.
Well, that was it.
Yeah.
A slave house.
Oh, really?
In case you don't know, and it was.
I didn't.
It was obliterated.
Okay.
In case you don't know.
Yeah.
Much to my consternation.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
So, um. Well, maybe we review our guidelines versus dimensions and, um, that would be the large bullet point department. Um, it's just maintain within the guidelines.
Yeah.
So on on the bottom now, i- is the massage, uh. The the therapeutic massage going to go on the bottom? What's going on the bottom? I see.
Yeah.
I see. So there'll be no sign on the bottom.
No, that's why they have this aggregate sign.
Okay.
Everything was in that main building.
Okay.
Uh.
Do we have any other signage on the front of the building? Not the freestanding, but, uh. For windows, anything?
That's it.
That'll be the only one. Um. It's safe for your frontage. You'd be okay because it's. Is the frontage any roadway or is it only main?
It's it's any roadway. So for example, tiger fuel got a little bit of frontage. They sit on both, uh, um. Twenty and, um.
Right.
It's a challenge.
I I wasn't thinking about Doug's May Tech. Doug's May Tech sits in between that and, uh.
The finest toward dogs.
Yeah.
And it's perpendicular. To the, uh, brick building, the large brick building.
Yeah, exactly. Um.
It it's really fairly on a, on a fruition, well.
Yeah, um. I. Uh. Do our members have any questions, comments, concerns?
Do you measure your?
No.
Oh, um. The building frontage. That's Harrison Street, not what I'm looking for. I just. Oh, there it is. Okay.
If you have it now.
I have no idea. Oh, Adam. Um, is the concern about the window sticker or about the the one closest to the road?
Your allowable size is conditioned on the building. So every square foot.
Okay.
Is based on every every linear foot of, uh, building frontage.
Okay. Boom.
Have you heard this come, uh? The sign come within the. The city code for signage?
Yeah, so a, um. Uh, of course, a sign on, a sign on the door is permitted and also a sign, um, as part of a, uh. What a pre standing multiple sign, the shopping mall is permitted all.
I see.
So, um.
Is that it's for window, it does get factored into your total though, doesn't it?
Yes, so it's added together. So, um, if you go to the section two one, Jennifer, I don't know if you see. In, uh, in the zoning code, um, you'll have a table one, which is within this far over, like. Which one's the back? If you can share with Brad.
Um, so name the section and. And. We're going for dimensions, right?
Forty six by twenty four. And twenty four by twelve. On the window. Which is very small on the window.
Um. Yeah, it is. Like, eh, the picture makes it look big, but yeah, it's only twelve inches by, um. Let's see, twenty four by twelve is what we said. Yeah, that's relatively small. Um.
We're we're talking twenty four is horizontal.
Correct.
Okay. I think so, right? Frankly, I wouldn't have minded if you did a little jazzier colors, pink. I wouldn't mind.
Oh.
But but it's long.
Um, okay.
That's what the second sign is two square feet. Am I right? Cause one foot by two and then the second one is.
Sounds about right.
It's four by.
That's forty six by twenty four.
Okay, and that's where the L B. Which is welcome too.
And the forty six, three and a half. Three and three quarters. Cause you.
So three.
Off by two.
Three, three seventy five square feet. So that's five point seven five square feet in total. Um, and then I've been trying to pull it up on Google Maps because we weren't provided on application signage.
Okay.
That little. Person.
Yeah, to see just how, um.
Um, you might be able to prove additionally. You will use.
Yeah, I, um. So. What I would say, and this would be just my opinion, um, uh. Looking at it being okay and then, uh. Just getting those numbers to make sure.
Hmm.
Um, I mean, if you look at that top sign though, I mean, that's. Yeah, that's absolutely. It's the same size as what's going in, so.
Yeah, she was replaced the previous one.
Yeah.
Which 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 window is the?
Uh, it's the front window, right?
Oh, there, there, okay.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I guess how much is that building price? No, good at, it's not good at geometry.
Um. I don't know. I try to like guess how many like. I like laid down and just like flopped over a few times, but, uh, but that's how my brain goes of like. Trying to do measurement, but. Uh.
This is, this tattoo. Uh, probably is quite historic for 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 Scottsville. You know, Scottsville was a river town. It had a lot of, a lot of traffic through here. And, um, I don't know for sure, but my guess is, uh. There was a lot of tattooing going on in the, in the old days.
Yeah. Um, so members, uh, how how do you feel? Do you feel like you can vote on it? Now, you you're welcome to do a contingent of getting the numbers and, you know, we. We were able to do it with the physical therapy where they were just a little bit over, but we were able to accommodate.
I think it's okay.
I think it's okay.
It's forty six inches by twenty four. That's.
How much over?
It's essentially four by two. So that's what, uh, eight. So you have eight square feet on that, uh, freestanding side.
True.
Over here, Brad. And then this one ends up being one foot by two feet. It's two square feet. So that's ten square feet. And then I would maybe guess that the frontage of that is twenty feet. So there's more than enough, uh, permitted. Uh, but I can. Review it administratively and if the applicant would provide frontage, uh, make a firm that. Uh. Similar to the, uh, Ivy nursery business or not, I. I'm surprised.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, Ivy rehab.
Um. Uh, so that that's, that's going to be up to. Claire and Brad, um.
I think it's in, you know, it's in reasonably good taste. It it. It doesn't overwhelm the the anything around it. I I see. I think it's fine.
Okay. Could I?
Yeah, I.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would concur. Yeah, I would concur. I mean, I think that I've noticed, you know, that's going to be the one's going to be on the door and it's. Fine, and then. The one on the sign, I think, you know, um. Some of the, you know, the barefoot ice cream isn't even there anymore. So I think it's good to have a. Uh, you know, a business that's actually in there. So I I think it's fine, too.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
And I second, second that motion.
All right, and then a roll call for me, please. Sorry.
Mr. Barker?
Uh, yes. Yeah. Yes, I approve.
Our set is. Claire?
I approve.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight, I'm sorry for the hassle.
No, that's all right, do I need to email the frontage to anybody?
Uh, you can follow up with me tomorrow, uh, over email.
Sure.
And I'll just clear out some applications.
Sounds good.
Um, we, we did approve it though, so you know, it's not contingent on, so you're good to go.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, dear.
Actually, yes.
Good luck.
Good evening.
Yes.
All right, uh, with that, we will now move to our four D, which is gonna be discussion of E nine eleven uh, signs in H O D and E C, E P C liaison. Uh, Elaine Morse, is she remote with us?
I'm here.
Hey there, how are you doing tonight?
Great, thanks, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. I don't know which way to look, maybe that way, uh, yeah, um, but thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you for making the time for me on your agenda, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, um. So yeah, um, I'll, I'll give you the floor and.
Okay, that's great, um, I'm not, I don't have my video on, do I need it on Javier?
No, no.
Josh? I'm good?
Yep, you're good to go.
Okay, thanks. Okay, well, I um, had sent something to Javier and Melody to share with you all so that you had something printed in front of you. Um, so let me get, start with a little bit of background. The town created, um, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, or E P C, uh, a few months ago, it was a brainchild basically of Jack Maxwell and myself, who both had a spirit for preparedness and emergency planning and things like that, so we, um, got approval from the town to create the committee and we've taken on a number of projects, things like updating the town's operational plan um, to broaden the scope beyond just flooding. Um, Jack has a nonprofit and he has an outreach arm to warn people about weather-related events and things like that through Facebook or Instagram. And one of the, one of the projects that we took up is, um, E nine one one, and what that is, is um, E nine one one signs are those reflective markers that you typically see maybe on mailbox posts or at the end of driveways, um, that indicate the address and where the exact property is located. So in looking around the town, I noticed that, um, not all properties had them. And this becomes a problem for first responders, so for uh, fire, police, uh, medical, um, emergencies. In those personnels that are driving to the scene, they need to be able to locate a property quickly. In the absence of these reflective E nine one one markers, they can often miss an address. And in the time when seconds count for saving lives, um, that becomes problematic. So we've teamed up with first responders, so Chief Kersley, uh, of Scottsville Fire Department, Chief Jenkins, um, county personnel, town staff. Um, we've teamed up to, uh, sort of collaborate on this effort. What, what the desire would be in terms of ultimate success, uh, in term, and in serving public safety, would be to have all properties within the town limits have these E nine one one reflective markers. Um, to that end, I met with Chief Kersley and we walked through town and I started to look at the various types of properties that we have. So we have properties with, uh, that are in the rural areas with long driveways, some that have multiple homes on one piece of property, some that are in town but not in the historic district, some are in the historic district, some are multifamily units, et cetera, et cetera. So we set out to sort of classify all the different types of properties that we had and started to brainstorm what kind of signs we need. One thing that came up in the discussion is if we were to mandate E nine one one signs for in-town, how would we deal with historic properties? What would the appropriate marker be for historic properties and where would it be placed uh, for the historic to- homes in town? So what I'm coming to you tonight for is your guidance uh, on what the sign style might be, if you look up at the top here, request, um, what the, in the blue, in the, there you go. Uh, what the sign style might look like, what color would the A R B prefer or recommend? And where the placement would be best for historic properties in town? So let me go into that, uh, a little bit. Um, so where should the, you know, the first question, where should the markers be placed? We currently have, I will guess maybe about half the homes in Scottsville have markers on their property as part of previous efforts to, um, to complete this kind of project. Um, it was a volunteer thing, they were available through, I think, the, maybe the volunteer rescue squad at the time, if I recall correctly. Um, so some people have them. If you look on some of the properties, like the church on Warren Street or a couple of them, they have a blue um, reflective sign with white lettering on their mailbox posts. Not all properties have them though, so if you look at other properties, even just walking down, let's say, Warren Street, some properties are not marked with their address at all, not on the house, not on the, there is no mailbox at the edge of the property. Um, so it's very difficult for first responders to figure out where they're going. Um, so the current signs on some of the properties are blue. I mean, a bright blue. And I don't know if that's appropriate for, um, historic district. Given that it's emergency services, maybe it is. But this is something that I, I need guidance, or I would be looking to you all for guidance. So the color of the sign, if we were to honor what people already have, would be blue. If historic sort of decor would require a different color, then we would have to potentially change the markers on the existing one. Um, if you go up a little bit, Javier, are you at the controls there, or is it Melody?
Yeah, me.
Javier, okay. All right, so if you look at the first example here, this is the standard E nine one one style. Ours, I said, are blue, not green, but green is a, a very common color too, I think Buckingham has green, Flavanna has green. Um, these are obviously reflective, a lot of times, again, they're mounted on the mailbox post. Some people mount them on like a porch post near their, uh, near their front door, or even on the front of the house itself. The problem is, it's not just about um, having the signs. It's having consistent placement of the signs. So we want to be able to say to first responders, if you're in town and you're in the historic district, look for the, um, reflective signs, the address signs, let's say, to the right of the front door. Now that's what Chief Kersley has recommended. Not on the mailbox post itself, because again, not all properties have a mailbox post in front. So, um, so you would have a sign potentially, and I'm just tossing this out as a possibility. You would have one of these reflective signs to the right of the front door of every single property in town. Some of the historic properties actually need multiple signs. For example, the We Grow Building, is everybody familiar with what I'm talking about? On the corner across from Victory Hall, right on Valley Street. That is a multifamily unit. And I forget if it has a, a marker on the building itself, like an address, you know, on the front of the building or not. I think it does have a reflective.
They, they, there's an old, um, Valley Street round sign that's on the concrete up there.
Yeah. So it, it has some indication, but that building has apartments that you access from the back. So if you are a caller saying you're calling dispatch, you're calling nine-one-one, you have a medical emergency and you give the address of the building, there's no way for those first responders to know that there's apartments in the back, and they're not actually going through the front door to get to the emergency. They have to figure out which apartment in the back to go to. So each of those multifamily apartments, they all have outside-facing doors. They would need a marker, right? They would need a separate and distinct E nine one one sign. So you might have whatever, do you happen to know the address of that building, Javier?
I have Googled, so, here's a sec. I don't remember, even though.
It's okay, I'll just make one up, so let's say it's five twenty Valley Street. Right, so the front of the building would have an E nine one one sign saying five twenty, right? The apartments, it would have an arrow on the side of the building in this reflective sign type to show that there are, um, there are apartment, there are other apartments or residences or businesses in the back of the building. And each one of those doors in the back would have their own unique E nine one one sign, say five twenty A, five twenty B. Yeah, see, here's a good, that's a really good example, no, go back, yeah, right there. Here's an example of a, of an apartment or a business that's on the side of that building, so if they called dispatch and they only give the five twenty Valley Street address, let's say, the first responders are gonna pull up in the front of the building and try to go in and then realize, oh no, everybody has to pile back in the truck and bring the truck around to the side of the building on Bird Street. Does that make sense, everyone?
Yeah, but, uh, some buildings, the, um, you're gonna have to go around the back, not the side.
Exactly, well, that's a really good question, if you look here, Javier, oh, right here. So if you look in that driveway, right here is another door, so you have a really good point. There's a second door for a second entrance to the building. That would have to be labeled separately. So there's five twenty in the front, five twenty A on the side, five twenty B in the back. And when, we have to help educate people that when they call nine-one-one, they have to give their E nine one one marker address. And that will enable our first responders to know which door they need to go into for that emergency.
There are also some, uh, apartments that are accessed, um, from alley, alleyways.
Yes, absolutely. And this is part of the outreach program that we're going to be doing with E nine one one to help educate people on how to call nine-one-one and what is the information that they need to give? I mean, Chief, Chief Kersley had a good, um, uh, story about, you know, when people call dispatch, some people just call and say, oh my gosh, I have a medical emergency at my address, here's my address, please come quickly, click. Right? They don't give any additional, uh, information to the, the dispatcher to allow them to say, it should be, I'm at the side of the building in five twenty A, I'm at the back of the building in five twenty C. Uh, so we have, you know, there's a little bit of education and outreach that needs to be done there. If we look at a building like, um, the apartments at the old school, they have a different problem, right, they have a different type of property where the front door you come in, but then there are all doors on the interior, interior of the building, not on the exterior of the building. So you would have to give the address of the building itself and then each of the apartments inside, which I think they are already pretty well marked, have appropriate addresses. And all these signs need to be reflective so that our first responders can see them at night. Okay, so let's go back to what I'm asking you. One is, what kind of, uh, sign should we mandate for historic properties? What color should it be? Where should it be placed? Okay, if you look down on the types of signs, I've included for your consideration, there are others, but these are probably the most popular. There you go, there's a standard, as I said, E nine one one style that most properties would have. If we go further down, you see there's four different styles, example two, example three, four, and five. Example two looks a little bit more decorative for a historic property and it lists the full address. So you would see this kind of, um, horizontally oriented oval to the right of every single door, or wherever you think it should be placed, on the front door, on the left of the door, on a post in front of the property, all of these are possibilities that I would like you to consider. Example three is a vertical, um, E nine one one sign, much like what you see on the mailbox post, but if you see, it's got a little bit more detail at the top and the bottom. It's kind of a nice, small footprint that isn't too intrusive to the, you know, his- historic look and feel of the property. Example four, you have something that's a little bit more highly decorative. And example five is a, a little bit, um, less decorative than example four. But these are, um, four types that I found that I thought might be appropriate. If you look at the colors, if you look at example three here, that comes with, it can be black with white lettering, white with black lettering, blue with white lettering, red with white lettering, or green with white lettering. So those are typically, some, and there's brown too, on some of these signs come in brown. Um, so those would be some of the color options to consider. And when you're thinking about a historic building, I don't know that you want bright red on the front of a historic building or whatnot. So, so that's sort of my, my ask, I do not expect any answer tonight. I have the, I have put in a grant to fund the, uh, the capital request to purchase these signs for all the properties that don't have them or that need to be upgraded. And we're looking for volunteers to help install them if people don't feel comfortable installing them themselves. I don't know if we'll get the grant or not. That, yeah, award is scheduled for June. Uh, regardless, I do think it's important, um, for emergencies in town that we have all of the properties marked. The group is currently working on a draft ordinance to mandate this for all properties in town and we'll see how council reacts to that. Um, there is a zoning ordinance, um, and Javier can keep me honest here, there is a zoning ordinance which already has approval for e- these type of emergency signs on properties, so there's no need to um, get additional zoning requests for them, that's already been approved. And so we're, we're, what I'm looking for just is from you all, stylistically and location-wise, what these things should look like and where you feel they should be placed for consistency. So that's, that's all I had for you, are there any questions?
A few, uh, so, do they, the mind goes to some of our buildings in town that have lots of apartments and only one street face. lots of apartments and only one street facing, uh, the best example is going to be like the apartments right next to Bane's. Um, the lofts that have three apartments, uh, but only have one door. Um, are we looking at just one sign for these collective things that then spread into a hallway for others? Or are we looking at multiple signs?
Well, there would need to be a sign, uh, near the front door of all the interior apartments, right? And there would need to be a sign on the exterior door with probably some kind of indication that there's more, there's more, uh, than one residence in the building. Some of the signs, uh, and I didn't include it, my apologies. There is a sign that has the E nine one one address on the outside, but has an arrow on it. And the arrow would indicate you would go through for additional apartments. So there would be a number on the outside with an arrow to indicate more inside. And then you would go inside and then each of those doors, interior doors would have to be marked with these reflective signs.
Okay, that, that was, that, that's great because my immediate concern was having three, four of these signs all on one opening location. And then kind of clogging up our.
Too many.
Yeah, yeah, that's a really, really, really good point. We don't want to have that, but you know, going back to that building, the We Grow Building on Valley Street, it does have separate doors on all entrances and we probably would put a separate E nine one one sign on each of those doors, right? So you hear, I think I can see their address marker on the front. But again, at night, really small, really difficult for first responders to see. And no indication there that there are other properties around the side and back of that building. If there's a fire and people are collapsed because of smoking inhalation, that's a problem. I'm sorry.
Some of those signs were, that you showed were large enough, um, there you go, uh, to put, instead of say putting Old Mill Road on the bottom. Some of those are large enough to put, uh, six A T T S. You know, six apartments in this location.
Yeah, instead of the address, you could put apartments, um, you know, you could list apartments there. Uh, and that's a really good idea. I hadn't considered that. That's a really good idea. So, and this is why I'm here, right? To get your guidance on this. I don't wanna, you know, I would hate to move forward. Let's say we get the grant and we can purchase these signs and mandate them on properties. Um, I think it's really important that you all be involved to give guidance on, on, you know, what they look like and where they should be.
Just another observation about, uh, sign colors. Um, obviously we don't want garish, inappropriate signs in our historic district, but, uh, if this is for, uh, an emergency, this is to save lives potentially. So I would suggest that, um, black signs, dark blue signs not be used because at night, uh, they're going to be hard to see, you know?
Yeah, the, the white lettering will make it stand out somewhat, but I agree with you. The blue, i- i- you know, if you're driving around, I would ask you to look at some of the properties and look for these signs. You will probably see them, the, the blue that is there is more like a royal blue. It's pretty bright. It's not like a navy blue. Um, but again, you know, to your point, you don't want something too garish, but you don't want it too understated that it can't be seen. So that's a really good point.
And green is no good, uh, for any kind of sign on a post, uh, or, uh, away from the, away from the building um, in vegetation. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, out in Savannah, there are green signs and half of them, you can't see it all.
Yeah.
They're lost.
That's a, that's a really good point. If you, if you have green and you mandate that they be on the front of the building. Chief Kers- Chief Kersley's recommendation was to the right of every door on the buildings. So if you have that stipulation, then you possibly could get away with the green because you're not going to compete with the vegetation because you're on somebody's, you know, the, the front of their house or the, the front of, you know, near their door, right?
Trouble is that, um, the number of the historic properties in, in, uh, in Scottsville have a set, are set back. And, uh, y- y- you're gonna have to go search for the door, uh, in the first place.
Well, so there are separate, if it, in the ordinance itself that I've drafted, there is a separate line item for houses that are within fifty feet of the road and houses that are further back than fifty feet. If you're further back than fifty feet, you need a post at the end of your driveway potentially. And then, you know, and then they can find it. So we've, we've categorized the different types of properties. You know, some of the rural properties, as we had discussed in the committee meeting. There's, uh, if you look at, there's some roads that are private roads and they have multiple mailboxes. Um, so I live down near the Dollar General, right? I live on a private road. There's no indication of how many houses are down there. Um, I managed to get one of the old blue markers for those. But there should be some potential in, you know, indication at the end of the road that there's three or four houses down there. So we're trying to look at each scenario for the different types of properties we have in town and give guidance to how they should be handled. Again, so that we can let first responders know. Always look to, let's say, the right of the front door if the property is within fifty feet of the road or at the end of the driveway or in the case where there's multiple residences on a single rural or private road, that would be handled differently.
Now, does this get to our enforcement or is this an enforcement done by planning commission?
So, well, we have in our zoning, uh, section four, fourteen, four, uh, let's see, fourteen, four D is public signs, which are any temporary or permanent signs directed and maintained by a town, county, state or federal government or their, or an authority thereof, and temporary legal notices and emergency signs necessary to protect the public. Uh, those signs are exempt from permit requirements.
Okay.
Um, but I've always, uh, given example that we maintain our street signs in the historic overlay district and what we use for the brown to distinguish it against the B dot signs, which are free.
I kind of meant more of like the non-compliance side. So people, when we get to the point where, you know, somebody has either elected to not do this or, uh, does it fall into, do we have, are we responsible for it? Or does this go to, I kind of, I want to know if, you know, we're putting weight on ourselves or another committee.
If I could chime in here, it wouldn't be part certainly of the ARB, right? It would be a zoning violation. And Javier, how typically are zoning violations handled?
So for example, a zoning violation regardless of, um, well, as certificate appropriate as, you know, we have examples here, you know, somebody put up a sign without going in front of us. If, it could be administratively, um, addressed. So, um, a reduction, you know, established more within our historic overlay district, which is here in our guidelines and our zoning is not permitted. Um, but then for example, a sign that's you're going to put up for your business would require ARB ver- overview. So I'm not sure, uh, one suggestion I might be is for staff and ARB to look closely at that, uh, draft ordinance and see if we're having a, uh, see if we're addressing enforcement appropriately. I wouldn't want us to create, um, a gap, uh, despite our inten- intention.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'm just trying to cover, uh, my and, uh, our, yeah, all of our butts, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's totally appropriate and that's why I'm here. So I welcome all of that commentary.
I think from a, like a style, I'm just, just having looked at the examples and, um, you know, maybe like example five to me looks like kind of almost like a building. So, but it's like a part of something and, um, makes it look more like cohesive versus like example two kind of just looks like anybody could have that sign. Whereas five looks more like a building and it's kind of part of a town, you know, like a historic district. Um, but that's just looking at it briefly. I've seen the blue signs along Warren and I think it's probably pretty helpful for the mail and, um, 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 you know, that sort of thing, being able to find the address, um, but if we wanted to go with something a little bit more, um, decorative, you know, certainly the other choices look good too.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's a determination I certainly don't want to make in a vacuum, right? I think that falls clearly under something you all would be interested in weighing in on. Um, and if you, if you go back to the pictures on Warren Street and you, you don't have to go back there, um, necessarily Javier. But some of those smaller houses, as you get further out on Warren Street, they're not, they have no address markers at all. So the house isn't marked, there's no E nine ones, E nine one one sign. It is very difficult if you're a first responder to, um, to locate those. So it's really important, I think.
Um, Brad, I think you made a really good point that with example two, there being plenty of room there to where if you have multiple, you can put, you know.
How many?
Uh, yeah, apart, six apps or eight, you know, units, something like that. I think that would be my, one of the things that addresses my primary concern of too many signs in one area.
We, you don't want too many songs.
Yeah, because I can think of just my building alone. I mean, we've got sixteen apartments there. So if we were looking at sixteen of these signs, I would go crazy.
Yeah, no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do that, but I think you're, the, I think the suggestion is a good one. You could do like, if we're looking at example two here, you could do one ninety one, let's say, A through L, right? So, meaning that you have that many apartments or units inside that building. Right? And that would give first responders a clue that, okay, there's more than one residence. Now I need to look for apartment A, B, C, D, E, F, G, et cetera.
This is complicated. What do you do? What do you do if you have apartments with entrances on three sides of a building, accessed from three different, you know, a, a, a street, a road and a, and an alleyway?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's why I use that example on Valley Street that I did on the We Grow Shop because there's a business in front. There's one residence on Bird Street on the side. And then in the back, there's an entrance to, uh, a residence in the back in an, like a parking lot or alleyway. So, um, we have all three, just as you point out. And those first responders need to know where am I pulling my truck or my car or the ambulance or whatever. But having, you know, having this reflective sign on the front that indicates there are multiple units in the building. So let's say my example of five twenty A through C. Right? And then the, the, um, A is labeled on the front, B on the side, C, five twenty C is labeled in the back. That would tell them and, you know, you could post arrows if you want to. I think the other thing I wanted to mention is we have some new developments going in town, right? There's the one at the end of Bird Street. We have the East Village. I would love to have this ordinance and mandated for properties, not just the ones that, you know, are currently occupied, but for the future ones that are being built, right? So that we make it clear that public safety is a priority for Scottsville. And it is the response, or, you know, the responsibility of the developer to put up these signs on these properties.
I, so as we're looking now, we, uh, we have our inventory that will be coming up in April. Um, that we'll be looking to get out, to go to all our properties, um, and then checking in on their conditions.
Mm-hmm.
I think that'll be a great time for us to review all of our buildings that we have purview over.
Good idea.
Um, and then we can kind of have a better idea of what we're looking at for the sign wise. Um, but, because when we say that, well, we want to have the sign on the right hand side, my concern specifying something like that, when you get, there's a point of you get too specific and then it doesn't work for some buildings.
Then on the right, you can't.
That where it's not displayed. So I, language I kind of immediately thought of as prominently displayed, uh, which kind of leaves it loose enough to where you know it when you see it. Um, and then it's enforceable enough of, you know, you can't take a picture of the house and you can't see it. That's an issue.
Yeah, just remember, and so that was, that came out of a discussion with Chief Kersley. And he was speaking from his crew's experience that if you leave that open to, to interpretation, you're going to get it all over the place. If they have new volunteers on the squad or a new driver or something, it would be best for them to know exactly where to look on the different types of properties, right? And the same with Chief Jenkins or anything else, the, the guys from the, the EMT unit to, to look. So I, I hear what you're saying and I, I don't necessarily disagree. But I would, I would ask this group to consider our first responders and how hard their job is and how much easier it would be if they only had certain places to look for different properties, right? I talked about, you know, you can have it at the mailbox post at the bottom of the driveway. Well, some don't have driveways, then they have to look at the front door, then they have to decide if there's multiple units, then they have to. I mean, it is complicated, um, to the gentleman's point who said that. It is not easy. And it, and the easier we can make it for our first responders, the better off I think the community will be. But that's just my two cents. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Uh, I was just going to open the floor and see if we had any questions, comments. Do you want to table it and we'll discuss it a little bit more next month, how you're feeling?
Well, if we're gonna get this done, we, we need to do it, you know? If we're gonna get it done, we need to do it. And if we, and if we're gonna do it, we need to figure out when we're, you know, when we're gonna do it. We gonna deal with this a, a bit every meeting? Or, or, are we gonna, uh, take time out, your next meeting and decide, how are we gonna do it?
Uh, so that at the moment would be up to you and Claire, uh, since I'm just as chair. Vote for.
Claire, are you still there?
Make decisions.
Yeah, yeah, I'm still here. I, I mean, do you need like an answer tonight, like from your?
No, no, no.
Like, um, because I think you said you have to wait on a grant. Um, like, do you want us to make a decision tonight or do you want us to spend some more time on it? Um.
Yeah, and thank you for that consideration. I, what I think would be great is to have some kind of response, official response from ARB by June.
Okay.
So this gives you, and this is why I'm here early, to give you all plenty of time. I think it's a great idea, um, Josh's suggestion to go, when you do the inventory, to look at the various. When you do the inventory, to look at the various properties. Think about it from a first responders' point of view. Look at how many. Are with address markers, without address markers, do any of them have E nine one one? And consider the job of the first responders and how do they locate these units when there's multiple units in a property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if you're going to do that next month, that's a great time to consider that in your walkabout. And then you still have a couple of months to deliberate and make a recommendation back. I can come back in May even, maybe I can get on your May agenda and. Get a sense of where you are. I can go on the walkabout with you. We can try to get maybe Chief Kersley or Chief Jenkins to join in if, if need be. It, it really needs to be a collaborative effort here.
Then what I suggest is that you have staff. That maybe as questions come up, for example, I should probably. Review ordinances again and try to anticipate some of the questions you guys might have after this meeting. And then as you guys deliberate on it, also feel free to tag me in to start asking questions, so. My first inclination is to look over the ordinance again and try to answer one of the two questions I have here. Point out what we have on the books right now in regards to sign ordinances. Share the page that we have on sign in our guideline and then reach out to other ARB. Because we can't be the first one who has been thought about this.
Where, where do we find this online? This information?
This was here with me today, so I provided a paper copy.
Okay. Oh, okay. I presume I have this. I have this.
Yeah.
Who are first responders? Who are we thinking about? Fire, police?
Medical.
Yeah, that is.
And then if we had some kind of an emergency, let's say that the town floods. And people need to be evacuated.
Yeah.
Right? You would have all three potential first responders on the scene, working in tandem. To, you know, working together to get people evacuated safely to a shelter. So they also, in those kinds of emergencies, you have multiple types of units on the scene at the same time.
And the town does flow. We know that.
Yes, and they're, you know, they're relooking at the current town operations plan, because the town operations plan is currently geared. Mostly towards flooding, which is our major threat in, you know, in the community. But the world is changing and the, the team has recognized that. The information in that plan probably needs to be broadened somewhat to cover other types of things. So for example. Ice storms. If an ice storm happens and comes and knocks out communications, what do we do? If we have to get a, a medical unit into town when the, you know, roads are closed or blocked because trees have fallen, what do we do? So the group is looking at a variety of scenarios. To make sure that we're doing everything that we can to keep the community safe. And these address markers are a huge part of that strategy.
An ice storm can be horrific. I was in one in Chapel Hill. And all the roads were blocked. The trees just exploded. All the power was gone. Four acres, people were freezing. That's a good example.
Yeah, and we have, you know, in the apartments, we have a number of, of. Elderly or disabled residents. We have, we've even considered scenarios with people's pets. Because we know from, you know, previous. Incidents in other areas that some people don't want to evacuate if they can't take their dog or their cat or their bird or whatever, right? So we're, we're looking at broadening the scope of the operations plan to consider more possibilities than what we have considered in the past. Are there any other questions from the group?
No other questions.
Okay, well, thank you all very much for your time. I'll look forward to hearing from you as you move forward on your walkabout and then at some point Javier. I probably should check back with the group to see sort of where they are, maybe in April or May. Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
Yeah, May is fine, yeah.
All right, everyone. Well, thank you again.
Good night.
All right, good night.
All right, so I'm going to open the floor up for our, any public comments. I don't believe we have anybody that's joined us. So then I will close the public comments. And then we'll move on to our last section, which is going to be consultation with any property owners in attendance. We have no one in attendance. So I will close that as well. And then, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Aye.
And can I get a second? Oh, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go home.
Thank you. Enjoy the vacation.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys. Talk to y'all later.
What, what island did she say?